The first order of business will be a public hearing for planning zoning application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash seven.
Legal notice, um, was placed in the sound Thursday, November twentieth and Wednesday, November twenty-six, two thousand fourteen. Notice is hereby given that the North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at seven AM Thursday, December fourth, two thousand and fourteen. And it has been amended to the intermediate school on Foxen Road, North Branford to consider one P and Z application number two fourteen, two thousand fourteen slash fifteen dash seven, specially use permit request under section twenty-three point one, schedule A, line A eleven, to construct a thousand square foot accessory dwelling onto an existing building at fifty-eight Pistapog Road, map sixty-seven lot fifteen, F, R forty zone. Owner Nina Burkhart, applicant Ken Newbig. At this hearing, all interested parties may appear and be heard, and written communication will be received. Copies of the proposal are on file at Republic Inspection at the Town Planner's Department, November thirteenth, North Branford. Henry, Harry Duley, Chairman.
Carrie, do you have all the, all the proper notifications?
Yes, we've received all of the notifications from the applicant. I've also received referrals from the following departments. The East Shore Health District reviewed the plans and approved the proposal so long as the septic tank is upgraded from a thousand gallon tank to a thousand two hundred and fifty gallon tank. The building official was also fine with the project so long as it conforms to Connecticut Building Code and that the sleeping area meets means of egress requirements and smoke and CO detection is required. The town engineer did not have any outstanding issues. Fire marshal did not have any issues so long as the owner applicant follows all pertinent fire safety code, and the regional water authority also had no issues. The application also required a variance because the accessory dwelling was over six hundred square feet. They're proposing a thousand square feet, so they came before the zoning board of appeals in November and received that variance. So other than that, I don't know if, the applicant is here, I don't know if he has any...
Yes, step up, yeah. Oh, your name and address for the record?
Uh, Ken Newbig, one eighty Village Street regarding fifty-eight... Ken Newbig...
No, no, you have to do both. Sorry about that, buddy. That one goes to the, some of this one goes out to the other one.
Ken Newbig, one eighty Village Street.
You have to hold it close.
Ken Newbig, one eighty Village Street, West Street, Connecticut. Here, Representative Nina Burkhart, at fifty-eight Pistapog Road, looking to put an accessory dwelling up for an in-law apartment. As Carrie stated, I went through the following departments, everything was passed, and we're looking for your approval. If you have any questions, I'll gladly try to answer them for you.
Just tell us a little bit about it.
It's a typical one-story, how, uh, one-story house, and we're looking to put an in-law apartment onto it, and parent, uh, parents are gonna move in from the kids, and they're looking, uh, it... Okay. Can you hear now? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, you just gotta keep it close.
All right. It's a typical one, one-family house right now. It's gonna be one family with an in-law apartment. We're looking to put a garage and in-law apartment onto that existing dwelling. Um, it's a, I'd say it's a split-level house, and we're gonna keep the same, the same design with the house to make it flow, and that's about it. If there's anything else I can help you with, I will.
Will it always be a direct family occupant of the addition?
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna put it up to be that.
It's not an apartment, it's an in-law.
Yeah, it's in-law, it's def, yeah, definitely in-law, yeah.
What about the electrical and the heat? Is it all separate, or is it all together?
The, the electrical be all one. The heat, the heat, I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna lay out yet until I get approval of it, but, uh, whether the furnace is big enough, or they'll put subsidiary heat in that part of it. But the electric will be one service coming in, and they're just, you know, we're gonna use the same, same service.
Anything else?
Well, to keep it an in-law apartment, it has to have the same heat and the same electrical, Otherwise, it can be rented out very easily.
Fran, uh, some, some houses have two separate, two separate, uh, air conditioning units, two separate furnaces for different parts, uh, so depending, depending on the size of the furnace, how, how that is done, uh, electricity will definitely be, you know, one service coming into the house and one bill at the house.
No, uh, East Street, Florida. Anybody else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve P and Z application two thousand fourteen slash fifteen dash seven, a special use permit for accessory dwelling unit under section forty-two point five point five and section forty, twenty-three, schedule A, line A eleven, to create an accessory dwelling unit within an existing single-family house. Fifty-eight Pistapog Road, assessors map sixty-seven, lot fifteen, R forty zone. Owner Nina Burkhart and applicant Ken Newbig, as shown on the submitted application map and drawing, subject to the following conditions, conformance to the requirements of section forty-two point five point five in zoning regulations, with the exception of forty-two point five point five F per the variance that was granted by ZBA on November seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, and adherence to all building codes and fire safety codes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, so, uh, since this is a, a public hearing, uh, please state your reason, and we'll start down with Dave.
I approve the...
Oh, wait, hand, David, we gotta do, so we can make sure we get it.
Jonathan, I approve the application based on finding no discrepancies against the current proposals.
David Holgren, I approve the application, finding no discrepancies to the current, uh, application as proposed.
Yeah, the reason.
I did. The reason is you did. Yeah.
Okay, uh, I also don't have a problem with this insofar as the, uh, the one thousand square foot.
Can't hear you back here.
Is it on?
It's on.
You have to put it in your mouth.
You just put it really close to your mouth.
Put it in your mouth.
Just speak into it.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, you have to have this right up against your windpipe. I have no problem with this application. Uh, no, my calculator just went off. Uh, the one thousand square foot is nothing more than a twenty-five by forty, which is a reasonable amount for a, a, um, in-law apartment. Thank you.
I approve this, uh, application mainly on the basis that, um, I truly believe that, um, if family can take care of family, that's the way it should be, and it meets our requirements.
I vote aye, uh, for the reason that, that the exterior of the building appears to maintain the single-family house appearance, and, uh, oh, I got, and so it fits in with the single-family neighborhood.
I also vote aye for the same reasons as some of the other commissioners, also that it, it fits within our regulations. So that passes five to zero. Uh, the next order of business is old business, uh, P and Z application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash six of a site plant development plan, inst, uh, installation of propane bulk storage facility, office building, garage, and associated driveways, parking, lighting, utilities, stormwater management, landscaping, assigned forty, zero, road map twenty-seven, lot thirty-nine-three, I two zone. Owner Donald J. Fucie, applicant agent BPR LLC attorney Jeff Beatty. The item has been continued indefinitely into the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, reviews the application, provides North Branford Planning and Zoning Commission with a report. The next order of business will be plane zoning application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash five, a request for an extension of the proposed amendment to section fifty-four alcohol beverages of the North Branford zoning ordinance to modify the text of section fifty-four point two, measurement fifty-four point three, discontinuance fifty-four point four, location, and fifty-four point five relocation. Advocate Cohen and Akapoli.
Akapoli. Akapoli.
So, um, we received a letter from Attorney Pastore granting the commission fifty-day extension. So that brings us to January twenty-fifth, and at the last meeting, the commission will remember you set a public hearing date for January eighth to hear this requested amendment.
Okay. That'll be continued. Oh, we're good, and they're here?
Yes.
Next order of business, new business, plane zoning application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash nine, change of use for preschool facility in the basement of existing church at seventy-seven Foxen Road, map fourteen, lot seven, a B one zone. Owner of us, house, effectual prayer word ministries incorporated, applicant Tammy Mendez.
So I've met with Tammy, and, um, also I've spoken with the building official and the fire marshal. Similar to the last application, they are requesting that the applicant just comply with local state building codes for the building official and fire codes for the fire marshal. The town engineer did not have any comments, and, um, the applicant still has to go before East Shore Health for review, um, but there's really no site improvements, it's just a change of use. So it's, uh, change of use from, I'm assuming, a preschool or storage facility in the basement of a church to a preschool, but I'll let Tammy explain the proposal.
Yeah, so...
You have to do both, and if you can say your name, your full name and your address for the record.
Um, my name is Tammy Mendez, um, I reside at one sixty-eight, um, Highview in East Haven, Connecticut. Um, we, uh, submitted, uh, this church has been in existence for fourteen years. Um, the property was once owned by a family of North Branford, and, um, we took it over, and, uh, the pastor has since died, and so, uh, we, uh, took over, um, the beginning of this year, two thousand fourteen, at which time, um, we, uh, decided that we wanted to have a nonprofit pre-K program that would be for need-based families, so it would be a sliding scale for ages two to five. Um, and we complied with, um, planning and zoning, that was step one. Step two was the fire marshal who came in and, um, gave us his approval. Um, and then the third step will be, once we have this, we go to the East Shore, and then we submit our entire application to the Connecticut Department of Public Health for licensure. And we also on the application, um, we are a nonprofit, the church, after taking ownership over, we lost, um, about eighty-five percent of the congregation, and so on Sundays, unless we have a special event, it's just about twenty families, when we have a special event, it's a whole house. However, on the property, um, it's a few acres, on the property, there's a house. In the past, um, about four years ago, they were renting the house out for rental income. Since then, um, the house has been vacant, and we're still paying taxes on the house. Through meeting Carrie and, um, Tom, um, we realized that we do qualify as a five-oh-one C church not to pay taxes on that property since it's vacant. Um, and however, we didn't find that out until November twentieth, and the deadline was November first, so we are made to pay taxes all the way until the grand list of next year, October fifteenth. So we asked for a fee waiver, um, because we have been compliant with taxes here in North Branford for fourteen years, and on the application, it asked, um, if you wanted to waive any of these things, and I don't know, we just thought, hey, yeah, that would be awesome. So we're just asking for your approval, um, which is, this is a first step and many steps before we're done.
Expect to have in the, in the preschool?
We are expecting to have eight. Um, I think the, uh, there's three bathrooms, and, uh, according to East Shore, um, we are able to have, um, there has to be a designated staff bathroom, which doesn't count, and then for each additional bathroom, um, sixteen students, so we can have a max of thirty-two, but we won't. We will just, uh, do about eight, and then once things get rolling, maybe twelve at the most, but, um, just a very small intimate group of kids.
On this, uh, floor plan sketch here, it shows the entrance in the front, but, I mean, I see the picture of the church, is this, if it's in the basement, how's the, how's the entrance in the front? And is, is there an exit, five exits out of the nursery school? Is it just a nursery school there?
Yes, and, and you have a copy of the map, and there's two exit doors from the basement. Um, I don't know what the type of, uh, how you would describe the, the, the definition of the building, but the building has a front door, you walk in, but it kinda has like a, a back, like a, the downstairs opens out to a deck. You don't have to go upstairs once you're down in the basement to leave. There's two, and, um, part of the fire marshal's requirement was that we have, um, we do have exit signs, but that they're illuminated, um, so...
So you're, so the basement exit doors are ground level?
Yes.
You walk right out?
Yes, but you can't enter, the front door is on the, on the top level, then you go down.
You have to walk down the stairs or ramp or whatever it might be?
Yes. And the entrance is on Foxen, it's a, it's a...
The stairs are from inside the first level, spiral down.
Yes.
And it, right now, it shows one bathroom in the front, but you said you need three bathrooms?
Yeah, there's one bathroom in the lower level, and then there's two bathrooms upstairs. So I don't think you have a map of the upstairs, but there is one bathroom downstairs in the basement.
So as part of the nursery school, they'll be using the bathrooms upstairs?
Yes.
How many people will be in the staff?
Well, we will have to comply with the Department of Public Health, and they require that, um, for children, um, that are younger than one-year-old, that there's a ratio of one to six, but because we're dealing with a little older kids from two to five, the ratio is one to nine. All staff has to be CPR certified, all staff have to pass a background and fingerprint check, and, um, there has to be two staff, um, on-site, there has to be a CPR, designated CPR person and a designated director. So even if there's only three kids, there always will be two staff present.
So there isn't a schooling rate? So currently, what does that space used for?
Um, we use it for Sunday school, we use it for meetings, um, uh, after church, we have sometimes food down there, there's a full kitchen. But in order, when Carrie, when, um, you guys came, we decorated for preschool, so it looks like a preschool now.
Now, with the full kitchen, are, will you be, will you be providing any type of meals for the kids?
Well, that will be approved if we can get approval from the East Shore, um, Health District. They said that, um, they would require whoever's gonna prepare the food to take a class, um, and that would be the only requirement, so we will wait for them.
And that's your intent?
Yes, to serve a hot, um, breakfast and, uh, lunch.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
You know, at least that precedent, three months ago, that we were gonna waive fees. And if we keep making exceptions...
I'm willing to make it. Do you wanna waive the fee or not?
Yeah.
I think we can take a motion to approve it and waive the associated fee.
We can discuss that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move to approve P and Z zone application two thousand fourteen fifteen dash nine, site development plan, conversion of space to preschool at seventy-seven Foxen Road, map fourteen, lot seventeen, B one zone, schedule A, line B dash five point two. Owner Abba's House Effectual Prayer World Ministries. Application Tammy Mendez, as shown on site development plan and materials submitted dated November fourth, two thousand fourteen, with the following standard conditions, fourteen, twenty, and twenty-one. For reference, let me just, the item fourteen, the standard condition is adherence to the requirements of the police department, fire, town engineer, the town planner, and the regional water authority. And twenty is, uh, requirements of the East Shore Health District. And last one is, is twenty-one, adherence to the requirements of the town buildings inspected.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Right, so, uh, any, any discussion, uh, the applicant did, uh, ask for a, uh, a waiver of fees, so, uh, we can incorporate, uh, if that's something we'd like to do.
My only objection is that, months ago, we decided to stop this, um, waiving of fees. We have very little money to work with in our, in our budget, and if we keep waiving fees because we're making exceptions, I, I just don't think we should do that.
My question was, she brought up, was it, was it the waiver of the three-hundred-and-ninety-dollar fee, or was it the waiver of taxes on the, uh, non-occupied house on the property? It was, it was our fee. It was our fee.
Okay, so there's three fees. You don't mind, anyone you want to waiver, there's a ninety-dollar fee, there's a three-hundred-dollar fee, and then there's a thirty-dollar, anyone, we would be so grateful. And it's only regarding the application fee, 'cause there was a state fee, a zoning permit fee, and then a site development plan for three hundred fee.
You had mentioned, Bob, that, that November first and November...
So we were just...
That was taxes.
Yeah, we were just saying our plate, that we're already, you know, currently paying taxes, but we are going to be on the grand list next year of not having to, so we were just explaining our plate, but this is only pertaining to your fees.
Wait, before you're done, um, the vacant house, now, is there any, um, future consideration to use that, or what's, what's the status going forward?
Okay, so, um, going forward, we had tenants in there, and, um, we need to cosmetically fix it, there's nothing that needs constructurally done, and then we will turn it into our parish's offices, just, um, offices, and, um, we're hoping to serve the community in a greater need, and hopefully we could do soup kitchens and, and all of these things, and it's a beautiful house, um, and we just need to get, put some work into it.
Okay, thank you.
Why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you consider renting it again, though?
Um, it was very problematic for the church. Um, we rented it, and, um, all of the, uh, piping, we had to evict the person, it was just crazy that, as a church, we were looking out for the community, and we just had extra stress. So we're going to keep it in our benefit and use it to serve the community, um, as a shelter or some type of soup kitchen. Um, the pastors are here, and, um, one of them works for the Connecticut Department of Children and Families, and so she knows the need, especially in this area, for, um, people that are on substance abuse, or just plain homeless, or for families that would like a hot meal. So that's her vision.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, well, go ahead. Okay, you just mentioned helping families in need, so you're not planning on this being a group home or anything?
Oh, no, no, no. That's problems too. Something very light, and we're doing what we need to do, but not having the, too much responsibility of... And it won't be for profit, because that's something that we spoke with the, um, the tax office about, it will not be for profit.
How many people do you have?
Um, like I said, since the, it used to be at full capacity, um, which is a hundred-and-twenty every Sunday, but because the pastor of fourteen years has passed away, I mean, he was a resident here of Branford, we are rebuilding, um, and so sometimes on Sunday, we have twenty members, unless we have a guest speaker, we can have as many as eighty, but our regular members have dropped down to twenty, and we're trying to rebuild that.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing I could say is... Well, the only thing I could say is, for myself, the fee is $390. The $300 for the site plan review, I'm willing to say half. We still, the mandatory state fee still has to be paid.
Yep.
And the $30 zoning compliance. So that would bring it down from $390, less 150, it would be...
$240.
$240.
Oh, we would be so grateful.
I'm willing to go with that, because it is a church, and obviously, you don't have members at this point. I just hesitate always. I mean, my heart says, go ahead and waive the whole thing. But I know that in the past, we've had big discussions on not dropping these fees, because we were dropping them left and right all the time. And our board needs to be functional, and with that, the offices need money. So that's my feelings anyhow.
You agree with that, Ron? Charlie?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so...
Have someone have a motion to...
What's that?
Have a motion to decrease the fee to $240. And then have a second, so it's like a separate vote, because it wasn't really...
So we'll do this first, and then do the waiver of second?
Yes.
But didn't you already do the...
No, we didn't vote on it. We're just gonna add it in there.
We can recount on the track of the motions and then add that.
We're just gonna add an amendment to it. You wanna make a motion to add the...
Yeah. I move to amend the motion for the preschool on Foxon Road to waive 50% of the site plan review, $150.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See and none, that passes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Still gotta do the main motion. Still gotta do the main motion.
No, you did it all at once. You amended it?
Yeah, amended it. We voted on the amended.
So do...
Somebody seconded it?
We seconded it, and then we started discussion.
Oh, okay.
Now, what we want to do is, that was to vote for the amendment, now for the actual application. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See and none, that also passes, five to zero. Site plan review, what is this here? Are they here, everybody here? Next order of business, Planning and Zoning Application 2014-15-10 Site Plan Review for Auto Repair and Sales at 797 Foxon Road, Map 24, Lot 9, in a B1 Zone. Owner: Steven Kajanas. Applicant: Anthony Dzuba. Is the applicant here?
I've been working with the applicant, and I've taken in the application. The proposal, as you've probably seen, is for a new business, which includes repairing and selling used automobiles at 797 Foxon Road. This is allowed in a B1 Zone, and I've referred it to the fire marshal, who said that he has no issues with this application, so long as they follow all appropriate rules and regulations regarding fire safety codes, and that he will complete an inspection once the building permit application comes through. The building official also had no issue, so long as there's compliance with the Connecticut Building Code. And the town engineer also had no issue, considering that the property is connected to municipal sewers and public water. And also, he noted that this was, this site was used for something very similar in the past, so it's really just a change of use. I requested that the applicant come before you, though, because to me, it seemed like there had been some time between the last tenant and this new business, and there seemed to be slight variations, and just with the sale of automobiles, the display of automobiles outside, and also the work on automobiles in the building.
If you could state your names, your address, and then just give us a review of what you, of the site plan, of what you expect.
Good evening, my name is Steve Kajanas. I own the property. I bought the property about a year and a half ago from Gary Engstrom, who was the owner for 25, 30 years. And he did a repair business there for the last 30 years or so, and sold some cars there. So it's really probably, I didn't do anything with it for a year and a half. I was actually considering business there with my son, my older son. But he's gonna do some other things, so then I decided to rent it, and Tony applied to me to rent at the lease the property from me. So I am also, I live, actually, I live in West Haven. I own a business in East Haven, a car dealership in East Haven. So I've been in the business about 15 years, and, you know, I planned on doing something in North Branford, like I said, also. Actually, I did business in North Branford for about seven years. At 1295 Foxon Road, we're next to Big Y. I was there for several years myself, doing business in North Branford. I've been in North Branford for many years. I enjoy doing business in North Branford. And so I almost returned, but, so Tony actually, I think, is a great candidate to do business there. He's been in business, car business, most of his life, and currently has an operating business in Guilford, which he wants to move to North Branford, so I think he'll be a great fit for the community.
Hi, my name is Anthony Dzuba. I own and run the lab in East Haven. I'm applying for auto repair and used car sales.
Tell us a little about your, is this a current business that you're moving here, correct?
I have a business in Guilford now, for the past 10 years, auto repair.
And how many cars do you service through the course of a week, or on average?
It's maybe around 20 or so, by day repair.
And then it's also, you're gonna be doing sales?
Car sales, yes.
So how many cars do you usually have on the lot at any given time?
My first time doing this, but I would average make about 15, 12, 15 cars per sale.
You're not planning any changes to the structure, you're right. You're moving into the existing building.
No, not at all.
I just wanted to mention, in part of the lease, there's gonna be no junk cars on the property. And I've stipulated in the lease that you can't have a car there over 30 days that's not operational. So, you know, it's gonna be a well-taken care of property. I mean, if you come to my property in East Haven, you'll see it's very well taken care of, garden. You know, I take care of my property, and I expect Tony to do the same there, or I'll be, you know, a little bit of a problem. So, you know, just so you know, it's not gonna be junkyard, you know, I don't, you know... The place I bought, East Haven, when I took it, was a junkyard, and I, you know, redid the whole place. I mean, for me, it's gotta look right, so. And Tony's very able, and he's a, you know, he's a good guy, and I really think he'll be a good fit.
Any other questions?
Just one, one thing I wanna know.
Yep.
Just one thing for the commission to note. I was, took a closer look at the parking spaces and what's allowed. And so when you actually add up, I think that the site plan, as Tony and I were talking about before, just kind of demonstrates the possible number of parking spaces, not what would be actually used. And so per the zoning regulations for the sale of automobiles, there's one per 200 square feet of floor area. So based on what you have, I think that's about eight automobiles that could be displayed. And then 15 parking spaces, which is based on the number of bays. So it's five parking spaces per garage bay, and I believe there are three.
Yep, three garages.
So the 15 plus the eight would be a total of 23 vehicles, parking spaces. On the site, just to clarify.
Anything else? Any other comments that you'd like to make, or? Don't forget your friend.
It's a two-handed operation.
I move to approve Planning and Zoning Application 2014-15-10 Site Development Plan: Change of Use of Space to Auto Repair and Sales of Used Automobiles. 797 Foxon Road, Map 24, Lot 9, B1 Zone. Schedule A Line C-10. Owner: Steven Kajanas. Applicant: Anthony...
Dzuba.
Dzuba, I'm sorry. As shown on the development plan application, the material submitted dated November 6, with the following, 2014, with the following standard conditions: 14 and 21.
In Ukraine?
14 is adherence to the fire marshal and all of his comments dated 12/1. And... Oh, sorry. Adherence to requirements of the town building official in his comments stated 12/1/2014.
Is there a second? Charlie's second, huh? Any discussion? That was Charlie, nevermind. Any other discussion? See and none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See and none, that passes, five to zero.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Good luck. Where are we? Okay. Next order of business, Planning and Zoning Application 2014-15-11 Propose Amendment to Section 54. Alcohol Beverages in North Branford Zoning Ordinance. Modify the text of Section 54.4. Location: Applicant: Dom Delecchio.
Hello, my name is Dom.
Dom, you wanna take both of these?
Do they work?
This one works. Yeah, one goes to the system, one here is here.
My name is Dom Delecchio. My family owns the shopping plaza in Norfolk Center. It consists of Dunkin' Donuts, Subway, the Sunoco Gas Station. We've been in business for approximately 55 years. We were the first commercial building built in the center. We also the first gas station in the center. And the center kind of built up around us over the years. And tonight, I'm before you, seeking an amendment to, text amendment for the liquor control regs. Section 54.4.2, regarding the 1,500-foot rule that currently exists that restricts the number of light-kind liquor establishments in the center of town, or throughout town, actually. And, you know, before I get too far in this, I just wanna make a couple of quick comments here. And one of them is that, you know, we, I'm standing before you tonight as an owner applicant. And what that means is that we have standing to appear before the commission tonight. As an owner applicant, standing in legal terms means that you have some connection to the community. You're either a taxpayer, resident, property owner, leaseholder, renter. And I just wanna make it clear that, you know, I do have standing to appear before you this evening. And if you look at your application for a text amendment change, it clearly requires two signatures. One is for the applicant, another is an owner signature. And the reason that they have the owner signature there is there's, you have to demonstrate that you have some connection to the community. If you, for instance, I don't own any property in Madison. I have no connection to the town of Madison. I certainly can't go before the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission and start arguing for them to change their text amendment, any text amendment change. So I wanna make it clear that, you know, we certainly have the right to be here. And unlike a prior application, where I believe for a similar text amendment change, they do not have the standing to appear before the planning and zoning. Yet, they appeared on three separate occasions before planning and zoning. And not only that, you scheduled a public hearing for someone that has demonstrated that they don't have any connection to the community. And I think that's a critical matter, and I just wanna read a quote that I have from a court case. And this is from one of the...
Hey, Dom. Dom, I understand where you're going with that, but what we're here to do is talk about... We understand that, and it's critical. If there's any legal, if there's anything that does not fit, and we need legal, we need to reach out to the legal side to get, to find out what our next steps are. So we will do that on our part. But tonight, we're here to listen to your amended, your amendment, and to set a potential public hearing date. So if we could just kind of stay on track with that, please?
You know, unfortunately, Eric did bring this to the attention of the commission, and I don't believe there's any action on it. So that's why I'm raising that issue again tonight, because it's very clear that to apply before a planning and zoning commission, you have to demonstrate that you have standing in the community. And I don't believe that was done in the prior application. I think it's a critical issue that should be considered going forward. Whether you consider it this evening or not, I don't really care. But, I mean, going forward, I think that, just so you guys know, you need to have standing to appear before a planning and zoning commission.
So we get that out of the way. All right, now, you wanna know why I'm seeking a text amendment change? All right, I have an interesting story to tell.
Probably not gonna let me tell my story, are you, Eric?
No, let's tell your story.
You are gonna let me tell my story.
Let's tell your story.
All right, well, that's nice. All right, as I indicated, we own the shopping center in Norfolk Center. There was a package store in the center for years. As a matter of fact, what happened is that we were the only business in Norfolk Center that was legally compliant with the town of North Branford zoning regulations for separating residents from schools, churches. And so we're the ones that, you know, we currently are legally compliant, and we're the only ones in the center of Norfolk that are currently legally compliant with the North Branford Liquor Establishment Regulations. What had happened over time is that we were having a problem with a patron at the site, who happens to be the best friend of the owner of the package store. And I'm gonna be kind, because my wife is instructive, you know, to use certain terminology here, but I'm gonna say his best friend drinks extremely heavily. And we had some serious issues with this individual, and he caused a lot of problems for us. We had the police department down there numerous occasions. And we had, you know, numerous acts of vandalism, break-in, entering, criminal trespass, criminal mischief, complete and unwanted disregard for the welfare and safety of the patrons on the property. So what happened, we had the police involved. I don't wanna tell you how many times the police were down there, it was numerous times. So finally, we had to seek a permanent injunction to ban this individual from the property. And what happened after that is, became more bizarre. Basically, on one occasion, the first thing we do is we get a temporary court order that prohibits him from being on the property at any time. What happens next is he comes on the property, under temporary, knowing he's not supposed to be there, and he almost runs over a patron at the gas station. The next thing, my brother's working in the store, he gets physically attacked and assaulted by the same person. And you have to understand, this person has difficulty reasoning, because he drinks extremely heavily. Half of the time, he doesn't even remember what he did after the fact, but that's beside the point. And so what happened here, we end up getting a permanent injunction against this individual. So he's no longer allowed on the property. Second time in a judge's 35-year career, he had ever had to ban someone from a... Second time in a judge's 35-year career, he had ever had to ban someone from a public property. That's how bad this became. So what happened is that basically, the owner of the package store, obviously with his best friend no longer there, decides he wants to move, which is fine. I have no problem with that. The problem arose when we, the zoning enforcement officer at the time, signed off on what is called a certificate of zoning compliance. And essentially what that does, it's sworn testimony by the zoning enforcement officer that the new location of this gentleman's package store is legally compliant with the town of North Bramford's regulations. Okay? So he signs off on that. I become aware of that on August 15th, when I see a sign go up next door. And what happened after that is that I questioned the zoning enforcement officer. He insisted that the measurement was taken, it was correctly taken. And this went on for some time. You know, we had discussions back and forth. And so what happens is, the town of North Bramford, like any other town, you have a right to appeal the decision of a zoning enforcement officer if you believe the decision was made in error. So that's what we did. You know, I'm a firm believer in the system. We have a democracy. And that's the reason that we have elected commissions and board members. They're elected by the people for the people to represent the people. That's what you think, anyway. And that's the way the system's supposed to work. So what happened is, I filed my application with the zoning board of appeals. And what happened after that is even more bizarre. I go to appear before the zoning board of appeals. And before I have an opportunity to speak, and I'm sure a lot of these people will relate to this, they say, "Sir, your application is not timely." And I, so I'm looking at them, and, you know, these are elected officials from the town of North Bramford. And please don't confuse them with these folks. It's a different board. And people make mistakes. The zoning enforcement officer I happen to like, he's a very well-respected person, a former zoning enforcement officer, I happen to like him. I have a problem with what happened in that, when we went before the zoning board of appeals, they indicated that my application was not timely. So I said to them, I said, "Well, how do you know that my application is not timely if you don't give me an opportunity to speak?" I said, "I have evidence I'd like to introduce on that matter. I think it's important pursuant to General Statute 8-6. It says that a zoning board of appeals has the right to hear," and that's very important, "listen to the 'hear' part, and listen, and then decide." And so, in this case, the zoning board of appeals decided, they made a decision that my application was not timely. Okay? So I said, "Okay, fine. You know, there's nothing I can do. They're an independent board, they make a decision. My only alternative at that point is to challenge them in court." So that's what we did. And this, I want you guys to pay attention here, because this is very interesting where this is going. So what happens is, I get to court, and, you know, the judge is basically listening to these arguments. And unfortunately, it's really sad to see what happened here. The town of North Bramford comes in and basically decides to argue against us, obviously, because we're challenging their decision. And what happened is...
Dom, Dom, just one second. We've got to change that. Good. Dom, go ahead.
All right. So my, what happens is, the town of North Bramford, any town, you have a certain period of time that you have to file your appeal for a, in this case, you know, we were appealing the decision that the zoning enforcement officer made. You have 30 days to appeal to the zoning board of appeals. So we, our appeal was certainly timely. The zoning enforcement officer signed the certificate of zoning compliance on August 15th. My application was stamped September 13th. September 13th is clearly within 30 days of the August 15th filing. All right. So you would think that, at that point, that the town would have reconsidered its position on this. But obviously, they did not. They kept arguing the point that my application was not timely. And that the town had rendered a decision, and that basically I had to live with it. And so what happened is, you know, during the course of this, you're obviously making your case, presenting it to the judge, and the judge is asking the town, and the judge is saying, "See, this is very confusing to me." You know, in a democracy, we have a thing called due process. You know, and what does due process mean in simple terms? It means you have an opportunity to be heard. Very much like the problem these people are having here. But to make the long story short, obviously, we... We win argument in court on the matter of this timeliness matter. So we're allowed to proceeding court. And we win the argument. And it was, it was very sad, though, that I had to actually watch the town, in the taxpayer dollars being wasted, arguing this point as to whether my application was timely or not, when it clearly was. And I, to this day, I don't know who was responsible for, you know, pursuing that action, but to me, it makes no sense at all as a citizen. And, but, and that's why we have independent commissions, zoning board of appeals, independent planning and zoning commission members. That's why you're elected by the people for the people, because you're, are these guys appointed? Oh, yeah, I didn't realize that.
Indirectly.
Indirectly. All right. But they, you know, you're an independent commission, you have the right, very broad discretionary powers. And you're not beholden to the system. And like town officials are, there's a reason that we have a separation of powers. You know, their livelihood depends upon their paychecks, their jobs. And not that they're not trustworthy, but sometimes they can't always express themselves. So you guys are like the check and balance in this democracy that we have. If you feel that there's a mistake made or an error, it's your position to basically freely express your opinion. Because you have, you know, you're elected by, appointed, you know, to represent the people in the public interest. So ultimately, you know, once we cleared the hurdle that the town threw in front of us, that our application was not timely, then we get to proceed to court. And it becomes more interesting there. Because what the town did to us, and this is getting too much for you guys? Oh, God.
Keep in mind that there's yet to be a public hearing on this thing.
All right, okay.
And you better not want to tell that damn story during the public hearing.
Well, I think it is important to get out, though. I think it is important to get out. And then ultimately, we get in front of the court, and the zoning enforcement officer is finally asked to testify. And he finally admits under oath that he simply never took the measurement. And, which is fine, which is fine, but, you know, why not, why not admit that upfront? Why go through all that? And, but, it is what it is.
Hey, Dom, just a, just a point on that. Was it that he didn't do it, or he did it, he did it by, what I understood was by walking distance?
No. What happened is that he realized, after we brought it to his attention, that he was in, within 500 feet of the church, which he was not allowed to be, the new location. He admitted under oath that he took his measurements only after he was informed that there was a, an error. And so, at the time that he signed the certificate, he admitted under oath, you know, "I simply never took the measurement, I never read the regulation." If evidently, he didn't realize it existed. But the reason I'm here is, it presents a problem for us, and that's why I'm seeking to have an amendment to the 1,500-foot rule. Because what's happening now, the 1,500-foot rule, is prohibiting us from illegally compliant use of our property. For 55 years, we were able to have a liquor establishment on our property, whether it be a package store, or restaurant with liquor. And what's happened now is that I'm the only one in the center that's legally compliant, yet I'm the only one that can't have a, any type of liquor permit in my plaza. And the reason that is happening is because of this 1,500-foot rule. And so that's why I'm asking for a, some consideration for a possible text amendment. I understand the need for the restrictions of churches and schools and things of that nature. But the 1,500-foot rule, you know, it acts more as a non-compete rule, and it's, you know, doesn't promote economic development. And unfortunately, because of the situation that we're in, you know, and I'm not going to stand before you and tell you, I do have another party, obviously a liquor establishment that wants to come into our plaza, but this is presenting a problem for it.
Is that an existing one in North Bramford?
It's one of the existing ones in North Bramford, yes. Yeah. That's willing to relocate. And because of this nightmare, and my, and my family did nothing wrong. We simply tried to protect our property. A lot of liability issues. If he had hurt someone on that site, they were coming after us. So...
So you're going to, so we're, basically, what we're here tonight to do is set a public hearing date. This is your question.
Is this hearing date the same as the one already having?
No, it's...
This is a different text amendment change.
Well, it's part of the same, it's part of the same one.
Different section, different section. I'm not giving you the mic pen.
You did a very good job. You told a very good story.
Yeah. It's a nice story. Probably has no meaning to anyone.
No, no, it was very good. Very good.
So, we do have two different applications for proposed changes to regulations of the same section, Section 54, which pertains to alcohol. These are different changes, but it's the same section, two different applicants. So the question to the commission is, the previous application, where you've already set the public hearing date for January 8th, we have enough time to have Mr. Delecchio's public hearing on that same day? If not, if that would be too confusing, we could have his public hearing at the following meeting, which I believe would be January 22nd.
Carrie, how does this affect the liquor store that got it, and if they went to...
Avariance?
Avariance.
So, are you asking...
It doesn't.
How this regulation would affect it? It wouldn't.
It'd make them compliant.
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change anything. There are, so the liquor store that exists in Norfolk Center received avariance. So, right now, in the town's eyes, they are compliant.
Right.
This proposed regulation change, eliminating the 1,500-foot distance rule, would not impact them. It would only allow for another liquor store to go in within 1,500 feet.
Isn't there already one too many in town already?
They're moving one.
Correct. So there are...
Right, so...
Sorry. There are currently seven packaged... Six or seven.
Six, I think it's six.
Package store licenses that exist in town. Per the population of the town, we're only actually supposed to have six, or five, whatever. I guess it's five.
So how will that...
So what, what I believe happened is that the state issued a license, and then did a census count, and realized, okay, wow, the population has actually decreased, so...
I got that, but what, if they won't put in another, give them another license, how is changing the zoning...
It would enable, it could enable an existing package store to move within 1,500 feet of an existing package store.
As long, as long as a package store, the license that we have for North Bramford, it can move within North Bramford, we can't add an additional new one. So if somebody came from...
So this person that's looking to move into the space that Village Liquor had is in Norfolk already?
Correct. Yeah.
So you want to change it so that there is two liquor stores in the Norfolk Center?
That, that would be one option. What's happening is, I'm not being boxed out only for a liquor store, but I'm being boxed out for any type of liquor use at all on my plaza. And whether it be a restaurant that wants to serve liquor, a bar, a package store.
But Dom, Dom, to clarify.
Yes.
The proposed regulation change that Dom has before the commission is to eliminate the 1,500-foot rule, which says that it's any like permits. So it would be any store like the current Village Wine and Spirits. Whatever package store permit they have, that same permit could not exist within your plaza, under the current regulations.
But it has nothing to do with a restaurant, is it?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. Yeah, it does have to do with the restaurant as well.
Well, actually, under the current regs, because the pizza place also serves beer, whatever license they have...
Boxes me out there as well.
Could not be within 1,500 feet.
And yet, I'm the only one that's legally compliant, but I'm the only one that can't have a liquor establishment. It's bizarre, believe me.
So the question in front of us is the, if we're going to set this for public hearing, is to do it either on the, on the 8th with the other public hearing, or the 22nd? So...
But it's basically the same thing, right?
Well, they're different sections of the same, within the same subsection, yeah.
He's asking for the same changes. He's, the other half is asking for additional changes. The changes he's asking for are the same changes he's requesting tonight.
No.
No, they're not the same changes. They're not the same, they're to the same section, but to...
They're different sections, different subsections within the Section 54. Right.
Carrie, question.
My proposal doesn't affect distances of churches and schools at all. My proposal is right.
I thought with the new regulation that was being proposed, that you could have two restaurants next to each other.
That's right.
With, with serving liquor.
That's right. But...
So what, I don't know what that has to do with it.
It's, it's confusing because we have, we're looking at changes to the same section in the regulations at the same time. So what, what you're talking about, Dom is going forward with these proposed regulations with the assumption that the other changes are not happening. Is that correct?
They are or aren't. Either way, it, you know, whether they move forward or not, it affects me, that 1,500-foot rule, regardless of what the outcome...
Not if it's a restaurant that's serving liquor. You still would be able to have...
Possibly, possibly. But I, I have some things, you know, I'd like to discuss on that, but now's not the right time when it comes to public hearing, and we will discuss.
Well, that is in the regulation, that, that was one of the reasons that we...
It's a proposal, it's a proposal.
Proposed regulation, that we could encourage more restaurants, that a restaurant could serve liquor.
Right, right.
Even if it was next door to another restaurant that served liquor.
Yes.
That has nothing to do with a package store.
Correct, correct.
So if you're just talking about a package store...
Yes.
To put another package store in there because it's under 1,500 feet, that's one issue.
Right, right.
But you're stating that, oh, maybe it wouldn't be, maybe it would be a restaurant.
Potentially, right. Like I said, I have a potential package store that wants to relocate to the area, right? I'm not trying to be dishonest about it, I'm trying to tell you facts.
I mean, I just, you know, why would you need two package stores in the center of Norfolk, which is a small community?
So what, I mean, it, it, it sounds like, you and Carrie mentioned, it's a little confusing when both of you work at the same time.
And I don't think we should have them both on the same night.
That's, that's where I was going to go with that. I was going to take the consensus and just to see what everybody else thought on that. But since they can, they are a little confusing, I think maybe we take the one that's already on the schedule for the public hearing for the 8th.
But one may influence the other, right?
We understand, we understand that one, and then we take a look and see how this...
Right.
If this one, if this one comes to the public hearing.
We wouldn't be voting on it the night of the public hearing, so he doesn't...
Well, that's what my concern is, right? Because the two do influence one another, to think that they're, they're not entirely separate issues, you know? And...
I think we should hear the one first, and then, and then if we, if we don't act on the 8th and it carries to the 22nd, we can then, at least we'll have an understanding of that one better. And then, if we have to hear this one at the same time...
Yeah, because, I mean, we went all through this, and it was my understanding, and I think the rest of the board's understanding, that...
You're doing good.
It was my understanding, and I believe the rest of the board understood the same thing, that this only, this, one of the reasons for the proposed change was so that we could open up the doors to more restaurants, like the one that's in the other plaza.
Central Plaza?
Yeah, Central Plaza. He's not selling liquor right now because there's a package store there. This would provide him to sell liquor. I'm just giving that as an example. I don't even know if he wants to sell liquor. So it was, back then, two restaurants could be next to each other. But that is... But that's different than a package store.
So are we kind of, are we in agreement that we'll, we'll, we'll separate them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Dave, you good with that?
They're two different applications.
All right, so Carrie, that's what we'll do. We'll schedule that for the 22nd.
22nd. So, can we vote? So, can we vote?
Agreed.
Yes, you should vote to set the public hearing for the twenty-second.
Motion.
And let's, do you think we should have it here?
What's that?
Make a motion that we have a public hearing on this PSC application, two thousand fourteen dash fifteen dash eleven, section fifty-four, alcohol beverages of North Branford zoning ordinance, to modify text fifty-four point four location on the twenty-second of January...
And it'll be here, at MBI.
At the intermediate school.
Second?
Second.
Second by Dave. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
See you none.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Dom, remember, in public hearing, you can't do the story. Capital improvement?
Application request first, I think.
Oh, this one appears on the extension. Is he here or is this somebody?
Yes, no, it's actually the weeknight. I don't think he, I don't know if he made comments.
Okay. Next order of business, planning zoning application, two thousand five oh-six dash twenty-two, applicant is requesting an extension of six years on the resub, re-subdivision of nine forty-two, Tuckett Road. It was approved on June fifteen, two thousand and six. One five-year extension was granted on June fifteen, two thousand and eleven, and per Connecticut's general statute, section eight twenty-six, C, a second extension can be granted so long as the total length of the extension does not exceed fourteen years from the date the subdivision was originally approved.
Good evening. My name is Luke May, that's where I'm from, the law firm, Paul May, for... This is a request for an extension on an approved subdivision. There was already an extension granted to this one time. Connecticut general statute was amended basically because of the economic condition in Connecticut and the construction law. The subdivision is off of Tuckett Road. It is actually shovel-ready, but the housing market is just not ready for the development. So we're asking that you have, under the statute, to grant the maximum extension possible, which is just under fourteen years.
Total fourteen, yes. So, so which, how many years does that leave us?
So we...
Nine more?
No, no. Six more years.
Six, six years.
Four years.
Six years?
Yep.
Additional six years.
So, right, so June fifteen, twenty-twenty.
Oh, wait, wait, another four.
Let's just make sure we're doing it.
Another four years.
Four, that's it.
Yeah.
He had two five.
What you had here, he had two five. So he's good to two thousand and sixteen?
Well, here it says there were one five, that's right.
We had the additional five year, he had a five year.
Was there, was it one five year?
There was one five year, yes.
So he had five.
One five year, so that brings him to twenty sixteen.
So that's, that's ten years total. So he goes, it's four years to get to...
And then an additional four would bring him to twenty-twenty.
Right, right.
So six years from now.
Or an additional four years.
Oh, from now.
He's already approved to two thousand sixteen.
Yep.
That's what I'm reading on there.
I thought that we were approved until two thousand fifteen. I'm coming in six months early, I believe.
So I think you are approved, two thousand six, and then a five-year extension brought you to two thousand eleven. So then another five...
Two thousand six, five, the five-year approval gives you two thousand eleven, plus the five, five years more, two thousand sixteen.
My fir, the approval was, sorry. Yeah, we just wanted to make sure we get this.
The approval has a lifespan of five years.
The initial approval.
Initial approval.
There was no extension related to that. One extension was granted for five years, so that's five out of a total of fourteen.
Oh, for the...
No, you only get fourteen total.
Right.
So...
When was the original approval?
Two thousand six.
Two thousand six. So you would have expired two thousand eleven, five more years is two thousand sixteen. You've got five more years, and then four more would bring you to twenty-twenty, which is...
Okay.
For agreement on the total.
I submitted a letter. I thought I made a calculation in there. I don't have a copy of the letter with me.
Yep, but it's, yeah, it's what you've, what you've just said.
So basically, if he's doing a, if he's asking, requesting a six-year extension, that's taking us to...
That would be twenty...
Seventeen.
No, it'd be the twenty-twenty-two.
I mean...
Because...
But I think this is what's correct. The twenty-twenty is the final, is the final date. So it's actually an additional six years from when it...
No, two thousand six plus five.
An additional four years.
An additional four years brings you to twenty-twenty, according to...
Yeah, the, the letter that I submitted, I very carefully calculated. I'm sorry that I don't have it in front of me.
That's okay.
Right here.
Yes, so that's what I'm requesting.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that was the, if I had the right number of years in there.
I mean, you can always, if you're not sure, you table it and just correct it, but it's...
No, I'm...
Yeah, I mean, I think it's two thousand...
The way it was worded in here versus here, I just wanted to make sure. I was one year off, but...
So, a motion to extend to June fifteenth, twenty-twenty is the clearest way I think to do it.
I make a motion that we extend PSC application number two thousand and five slash oh-six dash twenty-two to, to June sixteenth, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? See you none? All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
See you none?
Thank you.
They're passing five to zero. All right, now we're gonna get a general, capital improvement?
Yes, I mean, I just went with the number.
Next order of business, Town of North Branford, two thousand fourteen fifteen through two thousand nineteen twenty, capital improvement program per Connecticut general statute, section eight twenty-four. The CIP is being sent to the commission for review.
The commission should have a copy of a memo from Anthony Esposito, the treasurer, finance director for the town. And as Harry mentioned, it's regarding the two thousand fourteen to fifteen through two thousand nineteen to twenty capital improvement plan. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions or if I can necessarily answer them, but hopefully you've had some time to just look over it, and what Anthony has requested is for the commission to hopefully vote and approve the CIP.
We're just, we're just recommending approval.
Right, right.
We're not really approving it.
Right.
We don't have any...
And then it would be sent to the town council.
The town council, ultimately, they take your, your comments as advisement, but they can go any way they want, really, with it.
You know what I do, right?
Yeah.
Since we don't have any influence on it. Does anybody have any discussion on that? Do you have any impact on this? Well, we just make a recommendation, whether we, you know, we, we don't approve it, we're just recommending, you know, and offering any comments to the town, to the town council. If you wanna take a couple minutes to look it over again, we'll take a few minutes here.
North Branford Trust won't take it without the agreement, is that it?
Sorry?
North Branford Trust, that's what they're trying to convey it to.
Oh, we're still in the capital improvement?
Oh, capital improvement. We're gonna take a few minutes to look this one over, if you wanna take your time. That's, that's coming up.
Yeah, I know.
Fran, do you have a copy of this, of the capital improvement?
Yeah, I'm just confused as to what we're looking at.
Oh, we're doing this, we're doing, yeah, the cap, no, the capital improvement. I just said, take a couple minutes and then we'll move on, you know, we'll move over on this one, then we'll move on to that one after. I'm glad it was too long.
I have much ability to change that. I didn't know there was the digital voice recorder in there.
Well, I didn't see that.
New one?
I didn't see that one.
How the...
That's a school.
No, it's actually the, it would be...
It was a school, probably.
No, it's for town council.
That'd be like seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
How much?
Well, I don't, this is gotta be like seven thousand dollars at least to make it in here.
But we, for what, though? I don't, I don't, we have a, that's all we have. If they use it in the chambers, it's already set up.
No, but it would be digital, it's taped.
Well, we have, I didn't, I didn't even catch that in there.
Voice recording system.
Oh, that's not funded, though. That's fifteen, that's, that's a request.
Right, right.
Fourteen, fifteen are the only ones that really mean anything, 'cause that's gonna happen. Fifteen, sixteen, that could get, that could be so different next year. I mean, it's identifying, how much was this?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, wow. Yeah, that's not gonna...
That's not gonna stay.
It's not gonna go.
Yeah.
Because the budgets are so tight.
Who, who decided? Pardon? I turned fifty, I can't read four-point touch.
Oh, yeah, that's...
Starts with reading glasses?
No, I'm not, I'm not going there.
Oh, you're gonna have to, you're telling me.
No.
I keep my hair cut, it's very expensive, 'cause I haven't pulled, cut out the grays and leave, leave it darkened.
And you'll get, you'll start out with a sheet.
No, I won't. I won't do it.
You borrow somebody.
Yeah. Then you borrow somebody.
If I go to a restaurant and it's dimly lit, I was in an Italian restaurant, it was very dark, and I, very dark, but I can't see the menu. I just said to the waitress, whatever you recommend.
Get your foot out of your phone.
No, no. Dave, are you, are you good? Ron, you good? You wanna make a sort of a motion? Or make a motion report favorably? You know I'm gonna vote against it, just telling you that. Every year I do it, 'cause we have no influence on it.
It wasn't fully charged.
I'd like to make a motion regarding the town's two thousand fifteen to twenty, two thousand twenty capital improvement program. We have reviewed the program and recommended under general statute, section eight dash twenty-four, and to forward it to the town council.
Is there a second? Ron, Dave, Fran? A second?
Okay, I'll second.
Ron, second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Ron, was that an aye?
Yes, aye.
Dave? Fran? Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Fran's opposed, that passes four to one. The recommendation moved forward, and Tom Fran was opposition vote.
And I thought you were losing it.
I was going to, but I usually do that when, just as a goof, since you were gonna do it, I let you hang out there.
Thanks a lot, thanks a lot.
No, I was, I was a little worried, because if I was doing it, I didn't want to mess up the vote. I didn't know how Dave was gonna vote. Um...
Oh, yeah.
Are you a second? Do I follow? You go with that one?
Yeah. Right, right. Well, that's... Yeah, I suggested we just amend that.
That's right.
When's the what?
And then...
Yeah. What's your time?
They still have to go to plan next week. So we can come back.
You can come back, if it's a consensus, that's, okay.
Okay. Next order of business, other business, a discussion of removing the decking of the original bridge at Swans Farm and conveying the open space to the North Branford Land Trust.
So I'll just introduce this project. Kurt and I have been talking with Bob Weidman from Sunwood Development and also David Sargent from the North Branford Land Trust. And in conversations, and from my understanding, there's been a lot of back and forth as Shant's development was kind of underway, of what to do with the open space, and there was discussion about maybe developing a, organizing a homeowners association and conveying the open space to them. However, it didn't seem like that made a lot of sense, and the town was not interested in the open space, but we were interested in providing access to that open space to the residents. So I met with David and we talked about having the land trust take ownership of it. However, there was the original bridge that was a liability concern of the land trust. So conversations have progressed, and it sounds like Sunwood Development is interested in helping us to remove the decking and then have the land trust take ownership of the open space. So I'll let them explain a little bit more about their interest.
We need both.
Yeah.
Oh, we have to do both, please.
Sure. For the record, my name's Bob Weidman, Jr., from Sunwood Development Corp. And what Carrie explained is really, really the gist of it. We're completely open to either having the land trust own the property after we're done with the development, the open space property we're talking about, or putting up a homeowner, setting up a homeowners association. So we can do it either way. David and his group, we did meet with them, and there were some concerns with liability, so they just thought if we could remove that deck for them, that takes care of any nuisance that might happen, where somebody might travel over years down the road and it gets deteriorated, somebody falls through it or falls off of it. So we're, we're open to doing that. We'll take care of the cost of removing the deck and disposing of it out of the area of the, of the river. The abutments would still stay there so that there'd be no change in the flow of the river, so we don't either back up water or force water downstream fashion that goes now. So that's basically it. We'll, can you answer any questions if you have any?
Do you have any comments?
What's the...
It's not just a point of extension. It was a concern during the whole approval process about, you know, keeping the old, old structure in there. Now, actually, the new bridge has been constructed. If you go by there, I mean, you can see it, and, I don't know, they're, they're not trying to encourage people in there, but, I mean, you go in there and see it. And I have to tend to agree with Dave and Bob both that if that deck, that deck is a liability. At some point, it's gonna go, something's gonna fall off, and, and that's a concern. And I have to agree, the cleanest thing would be get rid of the deck, leave the hydraulics the way they are, and let the land go to land trust, 'cause that's, provides access to most people. And that's certainly, I think, what everybody wanted out of the whole development, you know, to protect the farm river and keep it open so people can fish, people can hike. And that was really the intent. And so, I mean, from my point of view, I think, you know, it's a reasonable recommendation, and I certainly would support it.
Fran, do you have a comment?
No, I wanted to make sure there was still access.
Okay.
I would like to say one thing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Just your name and address for the record.
My name is David Sargent, I'm president of North Branford Land Conservation Trust. And a difference between a homeowners association and a land trust is the fact that the land trust is open to the public. We are the people's land, so we're, and we would hopefully develop a trail on the property. It's a nice parcel, we walked it, it abuts water authority property. It would be a good fit for North Branford and its people. So all of our land, all our properties are open to the public.
Kurt, the question I have is, to remove the decking, what is it required? Permits, and does it have to go through any other commissions? You know, because it's, you know, wetlands, and different things like that?
It's scheduled to be on the Wetlands Commission meeting
Next week.
Next week.
Okay.
And to be honest, Carrie and I were just talking, um, whether, as long as there's a consensus in this group, you know, what form of motion you need. If, if you remember, the whole process was a big comp, you know, there's a long approval that went with the, you know, the Shant's Farm subdivision approval. If you want it, and I don't thi, just want to make sure it doesn't have an impact on the applicant's heat away. If it goes to Wetlands next week with a formal motion, if, as long as there's a consensus in this commission, they all agree with it, it could come back for a formal vote, first meeting in January. And we could have it all written up, if there's a concurrence that, you know, the commission wants to go along with that.
But do we, why would we have to come back here? Because it's changed the site?
Well, because Wetlands had first.
But I mean, if they act on it, I mean, we're not changing anything.
I'm, uh, to be honest, I'm trying to remember what the...
It's on the site plan.
It was on the plan to remain.
It's a site plan, say, a minor change in the site.
I, I believe it was on there to remain, so just, there's a, there needs to be a formal action to modify that approval.
Okay.
Because that was, it was pretty adamant at that time, that it be left in. I think the feeling probably has changed, though.
One question. The land trust, will you maintain that, that area?
Yes.
In what way do you maintain it?
We leave it as...
Well, let's give a little, so everybody, everybody can hear you, that mess one.
All of our properties are open to the public for passive recreation. We don't allow motorized vehicles or anything like that. No nighttime activity. Uh, we probably, we, we walked the trail, as I said, with Bob, or the, the property with Bob, and it looked pretty good for a trail, so we might be able to develop a trail there. That hasn't been worked out yet, we obviously don't, you know, we're still in this situation, so. But if we were to receive the property, we would look for it in terms of a recreational area, and probably a trail. Like I said, it backs up to water authority. We have good relations with water authority. We might work out something which works from that property onto water authority. We have, we have, you know, different collaborative partners we work with to try to make things bigger than that.
And there's still access, public access, once that bridge is gone, there is another bridge.
The, the bridge is actually a little set aside. There are twenty-six and a half acres, and that's only a half acre parcel. The other is a twenty-six acre contiguous parcel, which backs up to the water company. Once the bridge is removed, it, it's really a tiny little sliver of land.
But there's access to that property?
The access would be from the new bridge that Bob has already built.
Okay.
This bridge is older, it actually impedes, it impedes the river. It, when, in high waters, the, the bridge actually acts as a dam, and stops the water, and eventually it'll come down. So it's, it's better for all parties to have it removed. Right now, our lawyers say it's an attractive nuisance, so.
Anything else? So, I mean, do we have a, do we have a little discussion on a consensus of what your thoughts are on that?
I see no reason not to approve it.
Same, Charlie?
Sure. Prove it at their cost.
So that's our, our consensus will be for them to, you know, go to wetlands and then, then bring it back to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next order of business, a discussion of a proposed regulation change regarding limited bulk storage of propane requirements associated with bulk pays, bulk storage and notification process for text amendments.
So, actually, I'm just gonna give, sorry, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna give a little quick intro. So this discussion, in my short time here so far, what I've seen is a lot of things. But with proposed regulation changes, I've found that it's helpful to have the commission hear the proposed changes, possibly have some discussion, and then, like you've seen tonight, have the applicant then come before the commission submit an actual application, and then the commission sets a public hearing date, and then the public hearing is held, and then we, we proceed. So to, to date, I've met with the applicant, Chris Kranick, and attorney Ainsworth, and asked a lot of questions, talked about the proposed regulation change that is submitted to the commission just as a draft. And I, we haven't taken in an actual application at this point. The hope was to have the applicants just explain to the commission what the proposed changes are. Since our last meeting, I've spoken with the town attorney, and the town attorney has said that he would like to provide a legal opinion before any actual action is taken. Not that the commission is able to take action at this point. It's a very tricky situation, because, as you all know, we have an, an application before the commission at this point. So I, I just wanted to provide that, that background. But I did want to provide the, the applicants with the opportunity to at least present this information to the commission, and if there are any specific, I guess, you know, questions that you have for the commission, we can entertain those. That's my recommendation. Oh. So one other question, that maybe when you talk about the proposed regulations that you can just address, is a question about if the proposed regulations are intended to impact any, the current application.
Good evening. My name is Keith Ainsworth, I'm an environmental lawyer. I've been practicing for twenty-five years now. And I represent Chris Kranick. I have the pleasure of, of representing a gentleman who cares a lot about his community. I'll get right to the point. We've submitted a draft, a set of text amendments. As you well know, there was a sort of an unleashing of the regulations for propane. You basically unregulated an explosive substance, and, I'm terribly sorry, I didn't put it close enough to my mouth. As you know, you deregulated gas storage, and there, a prudent set of regulations would have controls on it. And what we've tried to do was take some of the information that's been developed in other town applications that have occurred along the shoreline, I'm sure you're aware of them, and tried to put together a set of regs that would separate, actually, there are two things that are really being done here. One is to regulate liquid natural gas storage, including propane, not just propane. And to put in separation distances and berm or blast wall type protections, whereby you can prevent explosions from having an impact on neighboring uses where people might be residing or working. And the second is actually related to the process, but has absolutely nothing to do with gas storage in particular. It's that, that we're trying to change how a text amendment is noticed. And one of the things, when we, we discussed this with Carrie, and I thought about this long and hard, and there's no way to actually do what you do for a map change, because when you have a map change, you actually know where the change is occurring, and you know who's going to be impacted by it in a certain radius, and you can give them notice, actual mailed notice. But when you're talking about a text amendment, it could affect everyone in the town, and you can't mail everyone a notice, that's just not practical. So what we tried to do was come up with some way of an additional set of notices by putting a sign out on, let's say, the town hall property. That way, people, if they see a sign on town hall, and they, you know, on the, on the lawn, just like you would have with an applicant who's doing a, a variance, there's some sort of notice that, look, there's something going on with our regulations. If people are curious, they'll be able to, you know, dive into it deeper. It's something a little, currently exists where it's just the legal notices, which I think a lot of people felt, and still feel generally, unless you're a, a diehard watcher of legal notices, you're just not gonna see them all. So the second half, I think, is probably less controversial, but it's either you want to do it or you don't. It doesn't really have a lot of impact. It's not a great deal of expense, it's just something a little extra to give a nod to people. Getting back to the primary part of this. The, the amendments are fairly straightforward. They say what they intend to do. I tried to keep them broad, and to answer the, the main question that you had, is this intended to affect the application that's pending? I'll, I'll, I'll answer it this way. It is meant to impact any storage of liquid natural gas. There is case law that says that even a pre-existing use, a pre-existing non-conforming use or a pre-existing use still has to comply with reasonable regulations. In other words, there have, for example, there are some towns that don't have any regulations for sand pits. And there were sand pits operating, you know, for, since the 1930s. And they put in place regulations for sand pits, because they wanted to regulate safety and dust control and all that. What the courts have said is, you can't shut them down, because they're a pre-existing use. You can't just regulate them out of existence. But you can put in reasonable regulations designed to protect the reasonable health, welfare, and safety of the public. In other words, just because you're a pre-existing use, doesn't mean you can operate without regard to safety if there's a reasonable regulation being proposed. So these were designed to be neutral. They're not designed to go right after this particular facility. They have an application pending, they're entitled to apply for it, they're entitled to go through the process. This had, this is not addressed to anyone in particular. Now, I'm, I'm gonna be candid with you. Obviously, this is instigated by the fact that this particular applicant also suggested a change to deregulate gas. And the public is now reacting. The public is now coming to you and saying, we want it to be regulated. And if they want at some point to say, this won't apply to us, that's their right. And they can go to a court and say, it doesn't apply to us, and a court will make that decision. I will tell you, there is case law that says that you have a perfect right to do this kind of regulation. And if they argue successfully that it doesn't apply to them in court, then it doesn't apply to them. But it will apply to everybody else that, that these amendments are designed to affect, which is this particular zone where you've unleashed gas. So, um, what I say is, it's an open question that it may, may or may not affect them. I will say it's an open question. My, my professional opinion is that it will affect them, because it's not a pretext, it's not designed to shut them down, it's not designed to knock them out. It's designed to put in reasonable health, safety, and welfare, or, I, safety regulations to separate the amount of gas, and separate it from non-com, non-compatible uses, which is residential uses. And frankly, I think, you know, business uses, if you work in a place, you should be able to feel safe where you work as well. So these regulations are designed to basically say, fine, you want to put in gas, you can put in gas, but you've got to take into account what else is going on around you. And the way the regulations currently read now, it's a site plan review, and you can't take into account the things that you would normally take into account with a, a special permit. And a special permit allows you to take a look at, for instance, we sometimes will, will create an, an industrial zone. And around, and in that industrial zone, you can do a lot of things. But you have to usually have a special permit to do the things in that zone, because, just because you have an industrial zone, doesn't mean that you might not have an off-site impact. Not all industrial zones are exactly the same. So what might be appropriate for one location, you know, a metal stamping shop is very noisy, because it's surrounded by other, let's say, warehousing, and it's not gonna disturb anyone, would be appropriate. But that same use in another industrial zone, but that might be adjacent to an old neighborhood, might not be appropriate, because it's gonna drive them crazy. Same thing with gas. If you've got an, an industrial zone where you want to store gas, and you've got enough radius around you, where it's just trees or ledges, ledges or hills, then fine, you store it there. But if you're next to a neighborhood, or you're near other businesses where people go and work, or, you know, daycare, or church, or whatever, then no, maybe you can't, because we've created a set of regs that change this from a site plan review to a special permit. We've also changed it so that part of, part of what you have to take into account is what impact it might reasonably have on the neighboring uses. Not that they can't do it. Someone may be able to say, I want to put in gas, my site's appropriate, the way it's being done, the amount of the gas being stored, and how it's being stored is not going to have an off-site impact, even in the worst-case scenario, in which case, they may be entitled to that permit. So these regs are drafted to be neutral, they're drafted to be rational, and they're drafted, frankly, to withstand the applicant's attack, if they choose to, on them, because they're not designed to go after the applicant, they're not going after a single person. I would suggest that the, that the change that was made originally was designed to help in a, a particular applicant, because it, you know, the, the designation of the particular zone and the streets, and it kind of, it designated exactly where this was gonna happen. I think this one's even more neutral, because it applies across the board. Wherever you're gonna store this stuff, you have to comply. So what we wanted to do is, we wanted to do this not as a blind sighting. We're not coming here to, to, to just beat you over the head with it. We came, we wanted to talk to Carrie, or she wanted to talk to us, and we had a conversation with her to answer all her questions. And then what we wanted to do was, at her suggestion, and, and we mutually agreed, it would be a good thing to come here before we applied, to say, do you have concerns about what we've done? Are the things you'd like us to present to you at the time of the hearing? So that you have a heads-up. We intend on, on filing this, so that you'll ha, hear it sometime in January. And, and we just want to give you that opportunity to be able to have that heads-up, ask us the questions, and, and feel more comfortable with what we're doing. So that's the general introduction. You know, I think, like I said, the, the regulations themselves are, are pretty straightforward. They, they, they give you the size, they give you the distances, and, and they set forth the process, which is familiar, it's a, it's a, it's a special permit process. So we're happy to answer any questions. If you don't have any, we're certainly willing to accept, if, if staff wants to tell us between now and the hearing, you know, bring, make sure you bring this, or make sure you come prepared to answer this question, we'll do that.
As you mentioned, it is pretty straightforward, so. And if we have any questions that we want to reach out to you, we'll run that through Carrie, and... So what we would do is, we would file an application, and we would set, set the public...
Then you receive it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So we, like I said, we've put together a draft, and what you see in the draft, I think, do you have copies?
Yeah, yeah, we all got, received them.
That's what we're pretty much going to submit. And there was some discussion about whether it should go in one section of the regs or another. We don't have, I, I chose a particular section, we, Carrie and I talked about whether it should go in another label. Those are the minor details, and we're certainly willing to let the, the commission decide where, where it should best fit into the regs. But, and, and whether there's some discussion about the meat of it, we're happy to have that discussion.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll run that through Carrie, we'll, we'll take another look at it. And if we have anything prior to the public hearing, after you apply them, we can reach out to you for that.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business is the bond release request site plan for Three Commerce Drive, PZ application 2011 12-8.
Okay, briefly, Three Commerce Drive, I was starting, they came in, uh... Yeah, about two years ago, for a site plan approval. They did some drainage work on their property, and they did some grade, associated grading with it, put additional parking and storage on the, on the lot. They were required to post a performance bond for erosion control and some of the drainage-related work. All that work has been satisfactorily completed. It was a $5,376 bond posted for erosion control and site restoration. I inspected it in early November of this year. And based on my inspection, I'm recommending that full release of the $5,376 performance bond. $5,376 performance bond for the project.
Anybody want to make a motion for that? Charlie, I think I'm broken. I don't need you.
I gotta find it in January.
It's ready.
Yeah, I moved that we return the bond for site port land work at Three Commerce Drive, P and Z application 2011 slash 12-8.
Is there a second? Fran? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, a non that passes 5 to 0. I was just getting started. Everybody's leaving. I was ready to entertain. I love Barry Manilow. About to tell the good Old Mandy.
We should get comfortable with that thing.
I, no, it's not. Trust me.
Okay, the meeting schedule.
Okay. Next order of business is a review and approve the meeting schedule for 2015. Because I'm not, I don't have anything else. Like, you have that? You didn't put it in the pack, did you?
They were in there last time.
Oh, I didn't get one. Does anybody, do you need a copy? Fran? I turned it off. Oh, yeah. It was buzzing? All right. Looks great.
So, the question at the last meeting was whether or not we wanted to switch from, so currently, we have two meetings a month on the calendar. Historically, there had been cancellations of the second meeting. So, then there was the proposal of just meeting once a month, which would be the first Thursday.
And I thought we discussed it already.
There wasn't a vote taken. So, that's, I think Bill left it, that, you know, left the...
My opinion is that we keep it at the two meetings, because it's easy enough to cancel a meeting. But if you go down to one meeting, you really, I don't think it works. It's just something, times that too much comes up.
Go, Charlie, I'm sorry.
I just wonder if it, we probably save a lot of effort in preparing for two meetings as opposed to one, doing the digging and putting it all together.
Saying the information, I mean, the same business, whether it's one meeting or two meetings, the work still needs to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that you're being more efficient.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing with going to one meeting is, I'm worried about is that if we're in a timeframe crunch, because something gets carried over or something like that, then we have to schedule a meeting and try to go through all that to schedule a meeting that's not on the, I don't know.
It's easier than just to cancel a meeting if there's not enough business. And we haven't canceled that many meetings, I don't believe, over the past year.
No, we just, I mean...
Right. I mean, well, it's been, I guess, only one since I've been here, one of the second meetings.
Ever since you come here, we've had a full agenda, I mean, just every time. Can you go back?
I'm the first one to ask. I think everyone else has been wanting to ask that.
I'm very blunt. I'm very blunt. I speak my mind. I say it nicely, but I speak my mind.
You know, the new person always gets...
Oh, boy.
Oh, yeah.
But then you could always say...
Okay.
Aye, make a motion. We keep the meetings twice a month.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, the only reason why we're having, we're continuing here is because the crowd, we can't, if, even though that the bulk, the propane storage isn't on the agenda yet, but if they continue to show up, which they're right, and they won't, you know, they can't keep it down to where the fire marshal under code, so we have to have it here.
But if there's police presence at the building, can't they, let it to so many people in the building?
I'm sorry?
We have police presence at the meeting. They can say, okay, 45 people in the room, they'll cut it off.
I don't think we want to go down that road. No, I mean, yeah, I don't think you want to go down that road.
That's the job of the fire marshal.
Yeah, it's a fire marshal anyway.
Carrie, can we get this room?
The first quarter.
The next meeting, we're trying to get the whole, a better speaker system, because that's the whole issue.
Where?
Here.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We're on the board of Ed's money. They ought to come up with another microphone.
But yeah, until this is resolved, I, it's better to come here, because otherwise, they don't have to leave, like last time, or two meetings ago. And then, I mean, and we have too much business, you know, and there's too much stuff coming up.
No, no, actually, in the town council, it's their peril.
Anybody second that?
Yeah, we did. Fran made the motion. Ron seconded and approved, yep. So, the last order of business here is, I'll turn that over to Carrie, because it's a town planner report.
So, the first item is just that, you know, we have two public hearings on January 8th, and then another public hearing scheduled for January 22nd. And then just under other items, this is correspondence that I received. This is an email from Arthur Kaplan expressing opinion about the 400 Road proposal. And then also, this is from James Flaherty regarding concerns about lightning strikes and in relationship to 400 Road.
Did everybody get a copy?
I got a copy of that.
Dave, did you get a copy?
Yeah, I called him, too.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. That's everything.
That's all you got? Charlie, final motion of the night. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You sure? That passes.